Good morning. This is April the 15th, hearing of the Education Workforce Youth Committee. I am Councilor Robert Stokes, Chair of the Committee. Also in attendance is Chairman of this Committee, Councilman Bullock from the 9th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Glover from the 13th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Sharon Middleton from the 6th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilwoman Felicia Porter from the 10th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Torrance from the 7th District. Councilman Torrance from the 7th District. Okay, well, we, I know he's, he's, he's logged on, so Councilman Cohen from the 1st District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Chair. And Marguerite Churn, who is Staff to this Committee, also, let me look real quick. Nikki Thompson from President Mosby's office, also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Real quick, guys. Nina Simmons from Mayor Scott's office, also.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Leave anybody out? Yeah, we have everybody here, okay. Before we start, also in attendance are several representatives from city agencies and other organizations. Before we start, I'm asking all speaker panelists to mute yourself before you, when you're not speaking, identify yourself before you speak. Speak slowly, clearly, and after you've finished speaking, please mute yourself again until you're asked to speak again. We're meeting to discuss Council Bill 21DAZ0039 Local Hiring Employment Plan. For the purpose of requiring certain contractors to create and submit to the Director of Finance initial employment plans to bid on government-assisted construction projects or contracts that receive government assistance totaling $5 million or more, requiring the Department of Finance to score the bids using Director's evaluation of the employment plan as 10% of the bidder's score. Requiring the winning bidder to submit a revised employment plan to the Director of Department of Finance with certain criteria and conforming related provisions. If the Council Presidents are in attendance, do you have any open remarks? Okay, not here, okay. I am the sponsor of this bill. I think this just gives some open remarks. I think it's a good bill in terms of when we're talking about contracts that are being awarded with city funding, that we put some mechanisms in place to make sure that if, if they're spending $5 million or more, requiring that they score on 10% of the bidding score, that we make sure we have, I guess, have the Department of Finance awarded, but making sure that we monitor exactly those contractors that are receiving that $5 million or more. So, I think it's a great bill. I think it just needs some, to have some, some good points to it. We just need to have this hearing so we can find out exactly what we need to correct on this bill. The bill was referred to three agencies. The Law Department. Anybody from the Law Department, although they have favorable amendments? Ms. Ellen DePietro? If you're on, can you talk about proposed amendments, please? She was just in, okay. All right, let's go to the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. Any comments concerned, now your office have some concerns about the bill. Do you want to talk about them?
Sure do. Thank you, Councilman Stokes and the other members of the Council. My name is Jason Perkins-Cohen. I'm the Director of the Mayor's Office of Employment Development. I'm joined today by Mackenzie Garvin, who is the Chief of Staff for the Office of Employment Development. And I'm really happy to be with you all today. I'm excited to talk about, I'm always excited to talk about local hiring. And I really appreciate, Councilman Stokes, that you and your team and your, and others, other members of the Council put this forward. I think it's an important conversation to have. Before I get into the, a few of the details, I don't want to lose sight of the big picture because I think, you know, when we get into the nitty-gritty, I don't want to, you know, we're the local employment agency. So, we wake up every morning with the goal of helping people go to work, and we spend every waking hour doing that. We're helping people resolve issues. We're talking to employers. We're making matches. We're helping people access training. So, given that motivation, given that energy, we are, and I don't want to be confused if we have anything concerns with this bill. I don't want to lose sight of the fact that we are completely and strongly supportive of local hiring as a concept. We think it's great that the city has a bill on the books now. We think it can be improved. We look forward to working with you and your team and our fellow city agencies and other stakeholders to address anything that can make it stronger. I'll also just say that it's personal to me. Even before I came to city government, my, my own personal history is working hard and strong on local hiring initiatives, both locally at the state level. I've served on national panels, written documents about how to, how to have a strong local hiring document. So again, I really look forward to the conversation. So, here's just a couple of details that we would, we would want to discuss either today or a future session. And I'm just going to talk in big picture, right? The first is what we termed administrative oversight. And we have great respect for the Department of Finance and Henry Raymond. And we've had a chance to talk with him in his office prior to this. But we think that when it comes to local hiring, it should be connected and overseen by the local employment agency. If we were looking for, and you know, this is going to require, when you're looking at employment plans from bidders and potential bidders, you know, you need to have some expertise in what that would look like. If we needed financial analysis, I'm running to Henry. But if it's employment analysis, I think it should come from the employment agency. And we'd like to be a part of that and play that role. So that's one. Could be an easy fix, but we'll put that out first. The second is what we're terming balanced reporting. And, you know, we're data people. We like to collect information. We like to see what the big picture is. I certainly see the temptation to collect a lot of information. I just want to make sure that, or we just want to make sure that in the desire to collect information and get the full picture, that we're not unintentionally clouding the most important information, right? We want to find, I think our goal as a city is to find this sweet spot where we get just enough information to accurately award contracts to bidders who have the strongest employment development plans, but not more information than we need. And then on the middle part and the back part, we want just enough information back to know how it worked. Did they really get people hired? Did they do what they said they would do? Did they help local residents get hired, particularly economically and socially disadvantaged residents? So, but we don't want to collect more, right? And there's a reason why our, the dashboard on our cars only has a few numbers on it or a few data elements. You know, do you have gas and how fast are you going? And is the engine running hot? It's not telling you, you know, how many times your wheels are turning or things like that. So, I think this one, in this best of intentions, goes a little bit too far, and I'll just give you, and, and the reason that's important is not, you know, it's because it could have a negative consequence. And I'll give you three potential negative consequences, and I think they're all related. The first is, as I mentioned, it can cloud the most important information. The second is it can really slow the process, right? And I just want to applaud you, Councilman Stokes, and the Council. There's two, I should have said this in the beginning. There's two parts of this that I love, right? The first that I love is that there's a pre-bid process, right? So that we're not waiting until the contract is awarded and then hoping that that employer that abides by local hiring. It's, you're sending a really important signal about local hiring, and I'm really, we're really appreciative of that. And the second is to make that real. You're awarding points based on it. You know, if you just, if we're just collecting information on the front end, we're not awarding points, you know, that sends a really strong signal. So I really want to applaud you and thank you for doing that. We really support that. However, that makes it all the more important if we're on the front end, the city on the front end, and looking at these plans, that we're getting information that we can get through quickly. Because what no one wants to do is to slow down, what I think I can say is sometimes a slow process already in awarding of contracts of goods and services. And if we're getting a lot of information, and whether it's us or finance or whoever, and we have to take a long time to analyze it, you are going to get on us. I know you, and I know it's with the best of intentions about why has it taken us so long? So, I'll just give you the one example about like, on the front end, about collecting information around employers' or bidders' health and retirement plans, right? And again, I, we, we believe in good jobs. We want employers to pay health insurance. We want employers to give their workers retirement plans. But if we're asked to, and again, whoever the "we" is, to evaluate health and retirement plans, that's going to be really, really complicated. I mean, I can't, I, you know, you're getting 10 bids and you're having to, and you're, if you're awarding points on it, you can't just say they have them. You have to say, who has the best one? And there's so many varieties of health and retirement plans, and some of them, you know, I think it would be always open to debate. And I think sometimes it would depend on the workers, right? If you're hiring a younger workforce or more mature workforce. So it would be complicated, and I think it would really slow down the process. And then the last point is sort of related to that, which is it's going to add to the cost, right? So, if employers have to do more work, and I just, I just pulled that one out, but again, I don't think you want me to go a data element by data element this morning. I'm happy to sit down with Nikki or whoever else to work through this. But the other element is the cost of this, right? So, there's a cost for employers that they're going to push into the contract, right? They're going to say, if I'm having to do more work on this, whether it's collecting information, reporting, that's going to increase my, my, my bid. You know, again, there's, given who we are, we would probably, we might say it's worth doing, but I just want to highlight it. But then there's the other cost on whoever, whether it's us or finance, who is evaluating this. And again, if you don't want us to slow down the process, then you're going to need a lot more analysts to do it quickly. In other words, if you just want to have one analyst, and you're okay with him or her taking two weeks, then maybe, you know, it's fewer analysts. But I don't think that's what the city will want. And so therefore, to get through it quickly, you're going to need a whole team of people. If you look at other cities with stronger local hiring requirements than Baltimore, like a San Francisco, literally many, many, many more people on their team. And again, it might be a good trade-off, but it just has to be written in. Otherwise, you'll be frustrated with the city not being able to accurately do this. Just a couple of other things. There's nothing in it about penalties for non-compliance. And, you know, I get, you know, I know that that's a controversial issue as well. But, you know, what happens to an employer who, you know, again, whoever's evaluating this, they put in a strong plan, they tell us all kinds of wonderful things, and then on the backend, we find as we're collecting this data that, you know, they didn't live up to that. I don't think the bill really mentions that. And, you know, I think one of the things that we have experienced currently with the local hiring bill is the chasing around for getting employers to report, period. And again, there's really no penalty. So, you know, that's, that's something that I think it's worth at least a discussion about whether there should be. And then finally, I would just talk about unintended consequences, right? And so, again, totally understand that the current law is focused on new employees. And if you're only focused on new employees, then, then you're not focused on existing employees. And this bill would focus on existing employees. I get that. On the other hand, again, I just want to make sure we're understanding the trade-offs. You don't, and especially when you're asking employers to document the percentage of their staff that is economically and socially disadvantaged, to the extent that it's demographics, that would be relatively easy. But when you get into the economics, you're asking employers to know things about their employees that they may not know. And they may, that, that's a difficult thing, especially on an ongoing basis. And it also leads to this kind of perverse situation going on where we want to bring good employers to Baltimore, right? Or we want to reward good employers. We want employers to pay a living wage and beyond. And in some weird way, it almost seems like there's a strange incentive to, to have more economically, you know, you just don't want to create a perverse incentive where the employer is actually, might feel like they need to lay off workers to bring on more new workers to look better in the proposal phase. So, we just want to make sure the language is tight because, you know, anyone who wants these contracts will, will work towards that. And so, again, we're happy, be happy to, I'll stop there. There's a lot more to discuss in detail. But again, look forward to working with you and your team, the Council President's team, to see what we can do to make sure that we're putting the best opportunity forward for residents of Baltimore to go to work. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jason. I see Ms. Ellen DePietro is back from the Law Department. I know you have some proposed amendments. Can you talk about them, Ms. DePietro?
Sure. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the committee, Elena DePietro from the Law Department. I'm sorry, I was having some technical problems. That's why it kept going on and off. But, yes, in our, our report, we, I mentioned some potential charter issues and some potential just technical issues with the bill. One of the issues that Director Perkins-Cohen spoke of regarding the initial submission, it was my understanding, after talking with Council people, that that section was going to be, was not intended to be a evaluation of the the good or bad nature of whatever they submit at that initial portion of the bid process. But rather just, if the descriptions were there, then it was, is just that they complied with the requirement, just like any other sort of part of an RFP. So, and I think that's important because if we start evaluating, if the bids start being evaluated before the Board of Estimates even gets to the process, then you have a charter issue with usurping the authority of the Board of Estimates to award bids. So, I think we have to tread gently on that particular area. And another part that I just want to remember to mention is regarding penalties. This is part of Subtitle 27 on the local hiring provisions in the code. So, I, it was my assumption that the penalties available for violations of the local hiring law would also be available to enforce this particular, you know, addition to that law. Aside from that, we also had, I can talk about the charter and the constitutional issues if you want to, but I think they are, with the right approach to this, they can be overcome. Especially, the one big, the biggest issue with the constitutional part is that in order to to not violate the equal protection clause of the state and federal constitutions, you're going to need to have some data that to support the the preference being given to the socially and economically disadvantaged workers. So, I think that's certainly possible to do. We just have to make sure we have all of our ducks in the row there. Then there were technical issues that I had with the bill, and it had mostly to do with just being able to understand clearly what was, what the bidders were required to do. And the, and the other part of it was that sort of inconsistency with how this is being put into the code. So, it's, the program is going to be part of the local hiring provisions of the code. And those provisions are administered by Mayor's Office of Employment Development, logically. The, in general, they are. The local hiring piece of that, of our, of Subtitle 27 is. However, this piece, which is plopped right in the middle of local hiring, is supposedly administered by the Director of Finance. So, that seems like a little bit of a disconnect and possibly would lead to problems with interpreting the provisions of, of the code that would apply to both entities. So, I think that it needs to be probably with one or the other. And like, I think that it was suggested earlier that MoED would be the better entity because they know employment. And that's what this is all about. Next, there was some issues, I thought, with just drafting and understanding. And I, I don't think I need to really explain those so much as that, you know, just it's, it's done for the purpose of making it more understandable and therefore lead to better compliance.
Thank you. Real quick, Ms. Nikki Thompson from President Mosby's office, did you have any comments?
I had a couple of questions specifically for Director Perkins-Cohen. I know in the report, you mentioned the, specifically the 30 days, and I totally get that. And I just wanted to, if we had the time, Mr. Chair, to try to unpack a little bit or discuss that a little bit more, the time limit around the 30 days, the extension that the, that MoED is asking, just so that I can understand.
I actually will pass that one to Mackenzie, who can better talk about that, I think.
Good morning, everyone. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the Council, and also good morning, Nikki. The 30-day extension really has to do with implementation. We just know from the existing local hiring law, it takes time to hire staffing. It takes time to create different modules for our data software tracking system. Local hiring also involves multiple agencies, so it would involve creating forms. So it would take, it would take time to be able to create the actual infrastructure to implement the law, and that would take longer than 30 days.
Okay, so 30 days is, you would prefer more than 30 days, if I, okay, gotcha. Thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, is that it, Ms. Thompson?
Yes, for me, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Also, we're going to have the Department of Finance, and they oppose the bill, Ms. Mara James. Can you give us some of the concerns about the bill? Do you want to talk about it also?
Good morning. Yes, thank you, Chairperson Stokes. My name is Mara James for the Department of Finance. We do stand by our report as written. We oppose the bill as written. We support the intent. We do believe that the local hiring, current local hiring law is important, and it's important to work with MoED to strengthen it based on the experiences that they have had in implementing it and the other agencies that they partner with. Just keeping in mind, this is the city's policy. So there's multiple agencies beyond MoED as well that are working with it. I'll share some of our concerns that have been laid out in the bill, and I can share the fiscal note that we put together. Our first concern, which has been brought up by law and MoED, is how this brings in finance into the bill, into the local hiring law. This is something that MoED is the expert in. Finance is fine with working with MoED and the Council and other agencies on addressing the procurement and pre-bid solicits, pre-bid adding 10% for those assessments before going to BOE. But we really defer to MoED as experts in this area and would prefer that they take on leadership around a lot of this. Second, the city is kind of already currently struggling with getting bids for projects. And as Director Perkins-Cohen laid out, some of the additional requirements of this bill could add additional barriers. I should note that the Department of Finance and Bureau of Procurement is working with the CAO to address the procurement process and improve that overall. But just wanted to raise that as a concern of the additional reporting requirements and barriers that could create. And then finally, just what was just discussed, the implementation deadline of 30 days seemed very short for being able to implement this, do outreach with contractors and agencies. And we defer to MoED on a lot more of the detailed policy concerns that there might be around implementing this, as well as their expertise in implementing the current law and ways to strengthen that. For our fiscal note, we based it on the law as written. We anticipate, as written, it would be a cost of $414,000 with approximately five staff, technology, and other costs built in. However, based on conversations with you, Chairperson Stokes, Council President's office, we expect there'll be some working sessions or amendments to this bill that could change that. And so, as those come up, Finance is happy to provide a revised fiscal note as needed. Thank you.
Thank you. Does anybody want to speak? I know the members of this committee do have some questions, concerns, or statements. So, we're going to start off with Councilwoman Middleton from the 6th District.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I guess I'll start off with one question. I know as we're going through, I guess, as you go through the, like, this is probably more for MoED. It seems like at this point, I wish we had had someone from Baltimore City Community College probably here to speak as well. It seems like there needs to be a continued strong connect with that college and maybe adding to, we got to think of some innovative things because our, our, people in our city are looking for jobs. They need help. We need to make changes. And I just feel that, that, that the community college can play a big role in connecting with people or companies that win these contracts to help keep, you know, the workers that they have, just keep them trained and keep them in the jobs. Could you, could you talk a little bit about, do you agree with that? Is it possible to add that piece?
Yeah, so thank you so much, Councilwoman Middleton, my councilwoman. Completely agree with you. And I should say that I'm a trustee at the community college. And the reason why I want, I am a trustee and want to be a trustee is because, you know, we at MoED recognize how important it is for our community college to be a leader in workforce development. They are, you know, we view them as a brother or sister to us. We, you know, we, we can help residents come in. We can resolve some of the challenges that they might be having in their life. We want to send them to the college for the occupational training. And I think what you're, one of the things that you're pointing out, which I think is something that I think is really important, is, you know, what the college will need though is resources, right? I mean, like, they can talk to employers, but, you know, one of the things we've said, and I know that many of you have heard me say this before, is like, the city doesn't have a training fund, you know? And we do invest in the college with some of our federal resources, but they're very limited and very restrictive. And they don't turn on a dime the way when a bid happens and so-and-so wins the contract, and they're going to need 35 workers of a certain kind. That's going to be really hard to work with federal resources that way because they just aren't that flexible. Not impossible, but, but challenging. And we want to make sure that as we're passing stronger laws, which are terrific to make, to require employers or to incentivize them to hire locally, that we're also investing in our people, right? And our institutions like the college and like MoED, to make sure that there's training out there that, so they can qualify for all these opportunities. So I think they go hand in hand, and I'd love to see that as part of this.
And that also seems to be the problem with our career in technology education, high schools, trying to get companies to buy in to do training right there with the high school. We have to find some kind of way to, for you, you know, for that whole connection to work so we can start this, you know, real hardcore local hiring. I mean, it's, it's just imperative that, you know, that's just a one step in the direction that we, we need.
Yeah, I agree with that as well. We have initiated a, an initiative with the school system called "Grads to Careers" that works with high school students as they're leaving high school in their senior year, and so that they're immediately connected to occupational training. Baltimore City College is one of the organizations that, that is part of that initiative. So they're taking young people right out of high school, and they're not going to college, but they want to go to work, and we're training them. It's been incredibly successful because we have data that shows what happens to high school students if they don't go to college and they don't have immediate employment. They're at risk for everything that you would worry about. They're at risk for just being disconnected. They're at risk for just being disconnected, becoming an opportunity youth, teen pregnancy, criminal justice involvement. When we bring them together like this, when you bring the two, the educational system and the workforce system together, you can eliminate that gap. We're doing that for a really strong pilot, uh, funded by local philanthropy and a little bit from the state. We should be doing it for every young person. Every young person in the city of Baltimore should know as they leave high school, they have a plan and whether, if they're going to college, terrific. If they're going to work, terrific. If they aren't doing one of those two things, let's make sure that there's opportunities, whether it's through us or through the college or one of our other workforce providers.
So is it possible that our, that our committee can get some of that data as we're, uh, trying to, you know, the, trying to be, um, upward with what's going on in the, uh, public school system? I think that would be helpful.
Absolutely. And, and just to be clear, we're partnered with the city school system. It's together. Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We'll make sure, uh, Marry, we note that. Also, Councilwoman Porter from the 10th District. Do you have any questions or concerns?
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair. Uh, I just, uh, I currently don't have any standing questions right now. I'd like to.
I'm on a, I've called right now, but I guess, are you calling my Gabby's message?
Pete, you left the mute.
No worries. Um, thank you so much, Mr. Chair. I currently don't have any, um, any questions related to this bill as of now. Um, one of my, one of my major concerns is that, um, there seems to be a lot of disconnect, um, between the agencies. So, um, I'll look forward to, um, to reviewing the final, the final state of the bill once we come to some consensus from Moed, the Law Department and the Finance Department, um, on this particular bill. But I do believe that the, um, the current state of local hiring, as, um, Vice Chair Middleton, um, just suggested, is a very important tenant, um, in Baltimore City that we have to, uh, we have to get a grapple on. Um, I want to ensure that we focus on the policy at hand, um, strengthening that policy before we provide any, um, applications or programming related to it as well. So thank you so much, Mr. Chair, um, for allowing me to express my concerns and I look forward to, um, reviewing the final state of the bill. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, um, our next, uh, Councilman Chance, I know you said your internet is spotty. So I'm gonna go ahead and let you, if you have any concerns or questions also. Are you still on?
Morning, Mr. Chair. Thank you, um, panel. I just have one question and actually, one question and one request. One is to Moed, can you please explain to the public your current process of evaluating, um, the data for local hiring? And then the other question is, can I, can you supply any recent examples of successes and failures of your current process? Thank you.
Sure, uh, and thanks, uh, for the question, uh, Councilman Torrance. Um, I'm gonna pass this over to Mackenzie, but, uh, in just a moment. I would just say that, um, and she'll get into the, a little bit of the details, but, you know, the implementation of anything like this is incredibly detailed. It needs to be. Um, and we literally follow that process from the moment, we literally, when pre-COVID, would have a staff person sitting at every BOE so that they, as contracts were approved, they could immediately start the process and work it through. But it's, it's a fairly cumbersome process. Let me pass it to Mackenzie and she can walk you through. And I, and, and just in terms of the successes, uh, you know, we have like a, you know, uh, we have data, of course, but we have like a heat map that shows where residents are coming from who are getting these local jobs. And, and I, you know, look, I, uh, I think it's certainly, uh, appropriate to say that the local hiring law should be strengthened. I also want to just acknowledge the importance of having a local hiring and law on the books and one that, that even if it's, um, not as strong as we all want it to be, sends an important signal to employers that most, that they respond to and it does lead to residents getting hired. And so let me pass it to Mackenzie to talk a little bit more specifically about, uh, the process. Thank you for the question.
Good morning, Councilman Torres, Torrance. This is Mackenzie Carvin. Uh, I'm just gonna go over the entire process of how local hiring law works presently. Um, it really starts with the contracting process that's within the agencies. When a bid solicitation goes out, there's a prebid meeting and our local hiring law initiative specialist is invited to that meeting to start the process of meeting with potential contractors to talk about what they will actually be required to do if they are awarded the contract and to just talk generally about the services that Moed offers and also, um, some of the ways we can connect contractors with the, uh, workforce system. And so that's the first part. After the contract is awarded and goes to the BOE, um, our local hiring specialist attends the BOE meeting just to confirm that contracts have been awarded. Um, the contractor is required to reach out to Moed within two weeks. Generally, we collect the information about the contractor from the share point form that goes to BOE or we work with the agency to get the vendor contact information. And then we schedule a meeting with the contractor to do what's called an employment analysis. This is what's required by law and on the employment analysis, there's specific data points that were required to collect. Um, I won't go over all of them specifically, but some of the things are, you know, how many people do you plan to hire? How many people are on your payroll, et cetera? Um, and then we also again, talk about different opportunities to work with Moed on recruitment. We provide them with a job posting form, um, and we also go over other forms that are required by the law. So every month, the contractor has to submit an employment report, um, with the information that's required by the law. Also, if they do hire a person, they have to submit an employment report. And so, uh, another piece of the law is that the contractor is required to post with Moed for seven days, um, um, before they can post it publicly. Um, and that's how it works. So throughout the life of the contracts, the contractor is sending in monthly employment reports or hire reports. Also, with a lot of contracts, the, all of the contractors are not, um, identified at the beginning of the contract. So as contractors come on, they repeat that same process. Um, and they turn in their monthly reports. We also have a local hiring review committee we meet on a bi-monthly basis. And so, and on that committee, we have a, um, we have rules and regulations that are set by us and the committee and it's made up of different, um, different agencies. And we go over some of the data. We talk about, you know, various things that come up with the law, whether we're talking about on-call contracts or how to improve the forms or go over, you know, elements of things that people can be confused about with the law. Um, and then we track all of that information on a bi-annual basis. We send a letter to the agencies letting them know which contractors are compliant with the turning in the reports, with meeting with us, with the 51% rule. And then we, we track, um, in a, a report that we share with the committee, the contracts awarded, the contractor, the total number of hires, um, the number of monthly reports received, et cetera. And so that's generally how the local hiring law works.
Ms. Carvin, can I have a copy of the heat map? That's what I was referring to about your successes and your failures because I think that map, it's okay, Jason, that map, um, shows the difficulty and also the challenges that you guys have. But my other follow-up, I actually have another follow-up question. Given the current process, oh, sorry, Mr., sorry, Mr. Chair. Given the current process and how you outlined it, plus the additional concerns and the, in terms of implementation, how many analysts would you actually need compared to what your current staffing is?
We would need at the minimum five, five analysts or maybe more, and that's just an estimate. With the current local hiring law, I believe there could be additional staffing. Um, and to add something like this, I would think you would need a minimum of five analysts because the level, as written, the types of, uh, data that's asked to be collected, the level of data collection, it's more than just collecting the data. There also is a level of evaluation. So like Director Perkins Cohen mentioned, if we're having to collect, um, retirement and health benefits, it's not just collection of the data, but it's also an analysis of that data. Um, payroll tracking, for example, that is very labor intensive. If we're talking about keeping a percentage of, um, a demographic of workers on payroll for a period of time, that would require certified payroll, monthly tracking, maybe even site inspections. And so you would need a lot of people for the data collection, follow-up, to answer inquiries, analysis. Um, and then I think the most important part, there's some other, um, elements to creating plans for working with people to help connect residents to the jobs. Also recruitment events, um, you know, screening job seekers, et cetera, to help actually get the employees to the contractors. It would require a lot of staffing. In addition, um, I think I mentioned this before, we're presently set up, um, in terms of data collection for the existing local hiring law. We use a system called Prism and it's designed specifically to collect the information for the existing local hiring law. And it's taken some time to build out what that, that platform looks like with early morning software. So to procure an additional module, build that out, test it, that would take a lot of energy and you would need a staff person that understands, um, that data system and can be trained on that.
Uh, can I just add one little thing? I mean, I think part of this is, you know, I just want to make sure that one thing is clear. Let, let's just give an example of a, a contract that's being awarded to put a new roof on a city government building, uh, and the bid goes out. You know, when it comes to us in terms of the workforce plan, you know, we don't know how many, you know, there's no way that we could be experts on every kind of work that the city agencies are doing. There's, you know, it's impossible. So it's a very laborious process, which quite honestly, you know, we're not, even with the current law, with the very little staffing that we have, I can't remember, Mackenzie, if it's one or two. Um, but, um, we need to be able to sit down with the, with the agencies and, and make sure that these plans are legitimate so that we can make sure that if they're saying, oh, well, I'm only gonna need 10 workers, that that is, that makes sense. Um, because otherwise, there's a, there's a potential to, uh, write workforce plans that are going to make, make them look good on the front end, but not be fulfilled on the back end. And again, there's no way of getting around the, the detailed nature of the work.
Thank you. Um, Ms. Mackenzie, can you make sure everybody on this, uh, committee get a copy of the heat map that, uh, Councilman Torrance had requested also? I'm also just want to recognize, uh, Councilman Mark Conway is on from the fourth district. But our next committee member will be, uh, Councilman John Bullock from the ninth district. Any questions or concerns?
Uh, no, thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, I appreciate the opportunity. Uh, thank you, um, again, for all the insight and information regarding, uh, the processes. And again, look forward to hearing some more information. So thank you.
Thank you. Uh, Councilman Glover from the 13th District, who is a committee ch, committee person. Do, do you have any questions or concerns?
Uh, not at the moment, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Councilman, uh, Zee Cohen, first district, committee member.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, thank you to all of the agency heads in attendance. Um, so I was wondering, Jason, um, in part of your, apologies, Director Perkins Cohen, in part of your, um, opening statement where you were sharing your concerns, uh, one of the things you said was, we want to collect data, but not too much data. Um, I was wondering if you could elaborate on that a little bit? Like, what is the appropriate amount of data? And could you get a little deeper into sort of your own cost benefit analysis of what it means to ask for too much data in a reporting requirement?
Sure. Well, uh, uh, thank you, Councilman Cohen, uh, for the question. Um, and, uh, that's a, that's a tough question because it's very nuanced and one that I think Mackenzie and I would like to work with, uh, uh, all of you and your teams, um, to figure out what is that exact amount. Um, I think one thing, you know, I want to be clear about, and I know we're, we're talking today about local hiring and, and therefore we're talking about city awarded contracts. But, but there's also, there's another piece to this that had, that, that is, that is, that is good, but it could be, it could turn sour, right? Which is, you know, again, we're the local employment agency. So we need to work with all of these, we want to be able to work with all these employers, yes, for city contracts, but for every other kind of work. And, and many of the employers who get contracts, the amount that they get on city contracts is only a relatively small portion of what they, uh, their revenue stream overall. And because we're on the front lines, uh, you know, we, we are viewed as if, uh, in some ways, you know, we'll take the blame. I mean, they will say to us, why are you, uh, making us do this or this is, you know, that whatever the complaint might be. Um, and, you know, it's really important for us to, you know, again, with, we want to have good local hiring laws. We want to make sure local residents get to work. We also want to have, be able to have good relationships with our employer community to, that they're, so that not only are, when they feel like they're forced to hire locally, we don't really want them to be forced, I mean, we need to have the requirement, but at the end of the day, we really want them, we want them to want to hire locally. We want them to seek it out so that one day we'll be all together and we'll look at this and be like, we didn't, you know, it's great to have a law on the books, but we don't really need to do it because they're all killing it. Um, so we're not at that point right now. And, um, building these relationships, again, and some of you have referenced this around what's happening more broadly around workforce development in Baltimore and encouraging employers to hire locally, uh, when, e- even if they don't have a requirement. It's why you don't want to be too punitive. It's why you don't want to be, you know, again, or you want to be balanced. Um, because, you know, like, and we, we, we hear the bitterness, uh, and we push back on it. I mean, I, Mackenzie and I have had tough conversations with employers to explain to them the reasoning behind the bill. Um, but we don't want to be in a position where we're, um, both discouraging, and I think maybe finance brought this up, or maybe it was, um, uh, the Law Department, discouraging employers from bidding or just, or making employers feel like, you know, when you require someone to do something, sometimes they, they carry with them some feelings about the local workforce. Um, so again, I, I think what we want to know, uh, we want to be, we want to drill down on what it is we really need to know. We want to know, um, what their local workforce plan is. Um, you know, how many people they plan to hire. We want to make sure that they're a, a good employer, which means they pay a fair wage and that they have appropriate benefits. But we just don't want to, uh, ask for a lot more detailed information that would be interesting and be interesting to analyze, but might either discourage them from bidding or make them feel like they don't want to work with local organizations. And it's not just Moed. I mean, the, the bill appropriately recognizes, uh, uh, Baltimore City Community College, UB, and references more generally other workforce providers. None of us want to be, uh, 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 in the, for employers to view us with, um, um, irritation. It's not good for the local workforce system. So again, trying to find that balance is important.
Great. So just quick follow-up there. So just so I understand clearly, so the sort of cost benefit analysis here is we want to understand what's going on. We want to know whether folks are really committed to local hire, but we don't want to be so cumbersome and onerous in the application that it deters potential bidders from even bidding and being receptive to further conversations? That's, that's kind of the, that's the question you guys are.
Right. That's, that's the question. And then I think, uh, in general, and, you know, I, I heard, uh, 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 the Law Department's, uh, discussion about the front end. Uh, and I very much appreciate, and she's been tremendous through local hiring process. I guess I would need some more understanding though, that how are we awarding points then? If, if it's, I mean, and maybe it's more simple. Maybe it's just if you submit the information, you get 10 points. Um, and there's no real review. It's just, you know, it says health insurance at the top, so you, you get, you get what you get. Um, if that's the case, then that, the good news of that is it's simple and I would, I would backtrack on my concerns about the timing of that. But then I would say then it would become less meaningful. Um, that's the downside of that. So again, it's the continuum of work and effort and cost and having the best possible policy. Um, and, you know, there, there's a sweet spot there that we all gotta, we gotta find.
Okay, thank, thank you for that. Um, my second question, uh, we are sort of on the brink of hopefully pandemic recovery um, as we think about the significant infusion of American Rescue Act money that's coming to Baltimore. Perhaps if the infrastructure bill gets passed in Congress, that there could be monies there. Um, just want to tease out a little bit. Um, just want to tease out a little bit, Jason, how you're thinking about um, our, our capacity around local hire um, in, in this moment um, where there's an infusion of money. Hopefully, uh, these conversations are happening behind the scenes about some of it going to strengthen our local workforce, to strengthen our ability to have really strong local hire. Uh, because just given this post-pandemic moment, um, where every municipality in our region and nationally is going to be scrapping it out to get folks back to work, was wondering if you could just exposit a little bit about as it relates to local hire and sort of our plant Baltimore's plan um, to situate ourselves in recovery, in this recovery?
Uh, so uh, you know, again, thank you for the question. Um, I think we're thinking in, in term, again, we could have a very long conversation, but I'll keep it short and say there's basically two buckets that we're focused on. And the first is getting residents to work quickly. Uh, and and maybe that's like the most obvious thing to say ever. But um, to the extent that we are getting uh, resources and we are getting, you know, relatively modest amount from the state, we, we're already aware of that. We're going to put people to work. Uh, and one of the things when you think about what's the, you know, in this, you know, incredibly difficult economic time where you've seen unemployment uh, spike at, or, or fall, I guess it does, uh, well, no, unemployment spikes. Uh, it spikes at a rapidness that is not seen in any of our lifetimes. Um, what is the best thing you can do? You go back to the, the best workforce development program of all time is the New Deal. And uh, what happened in the New Deal? They put people to work um, in, in initiative, uh, in projects that had a public good. So back then, and get this right in with infrastructure spending, right? It's, it's roads, buildings and dams. Uh, we still need many of those things. We started that process with uh, in the middle of the pandemic by creating Baltimore Health Corps that put neither nearly 300 residents to work, uh, mostly as contact tracers, paying at least $35,000 a year. Uh, now we're looking to do, uh, we're going to continue that and that effort and work with the health department. Now we're having conversations and you saw uh, an article in the paper earlier this week with uh, Mayor Scott in a particular community around making sure that residents have an opportunity to get their own neighborhoods clean and be compensated for it as they should be. We have opportunities to work with our Rec and Parks Department. Um, so we're planning to use these opportunities and literally take state resources and pay wages. Um, because that's, it stimulates the economy and it puts money on people's table. However, we also have to have a plan beyond the immediate. And that's where, getting to your point and uh, Vice Chair um, uh, Middleton's uh, point around training, uh, um, excuse me, Vice President Middleton's uh, 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 point about training. You know, we, when we get resources, what we have committed to as an agency is we do not swallow them. And I was, we put them back into the community. And so just like when we got uh, an infusion of federal resources a few years ago, we created an initiative called One Baltimore for Jobs and awarded 17 community-based contracts, including to the community college to put people to work. And that was evaluated as incredibly positive and helped 1,600 people. We're looking to do that again. So, and then if you combine those together so that people can get a wage and provide a public good and get occupational training so that they can get out of that and advance that into a career pathway, that's what we need to do in Baltimore. And we need to be able to find a way to sustain it because, you know, I, we're super grateful for the, the resources we get on the youth side and we don't, we, we want to protect that. But we invest almost nothing on the adult side as a city. And we, we just have to change that, uh, change that reality.
Thank you, uh, Councilman Cohen.
Thanks, Chair. Thank you.
Um, we have Councilman Mark Conway from the fourth district. Did you have any concerns or questions, Councilman? Councilman Conway? Okay, yeah. Um, before we take public testimony, there will be, the hearing will be recessed today and a work session will be scheduled for Thursday, May the 6th at 10 a.m. We will now take public testimony if there is any public testimony. For those who sign in using a computer, please use the raise hand function to indicate that you wish to testify. We will start with you. Next, we will go through all the users who have called into the hearing. Attendees who called and cannot be identified by name will be unmuted by the committee staff one by one. You will hear two beats when you are unmuted. If you wish to testify, please state your name at the end of, at the beginning of your testimony. If a caller does not want to provide testimony, then simply need to say they're not, they do not, they don't want to provide public testimony after two beats. If any speakers inaudible, then either directly call back. After testimony is finished, um, each council member, we already went through that council member that had questions. Excuse me. Okay, we're going to start with the public testimony.
Counsel, Mr. Chair, I don't see any raised hands. There are approximately six people. Did you want me to go down the list? And, and see if, okay, all right. First caller, did you hear the two beats? Do you have anything you wish to say? Okay. Ms. Emily Sullivan, do you have anything you wish to say? Ms. Sullivan? Jamal Simpson? Keisha Brown?
Uh, excuse me, I do not, I am representing the Bureau of Presupment. Thank you for having me.
Mm-hmm. Thank you. Lucy Font?
I'm here with the president's office.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Mr. Chair, concludes the attendees.
Okay, I want to thank all the city agencies, um, President Nick Mosby's office for being very supportive of this, Nikki Thompson. But I think this is a great bill. We're gonna work through some of the issues here because a lot of times we hear about um, employee, uh, contractors receiving city contracts and then there's no pipeline for our employee, employees and citizens here in Baltimore. And I think this bill, when we tighten it up a little bit, it will see a difference in terms of that conversation about, you know, we go to a job site and you see people in Baltimore city, especially black and brown persons, that uh, unemployment is a lot higher. This bill will tighten it up and hopefully we'll see a difference when we ride past a lot of these um, construction sites and, and see that now you see those persons that live in the neighborhood, that live in Baltimore city now have an opportunity to not just work, but also um, um, work with a company and grow and advance, in advance. So this hearing is in recess. A work session will be scheduled to take place on May the 6th, 2021, 10 a.m. Thank you everyone for attending the hearing and have a great evening. Thank you.